Good evening, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Third, call roll, please.
Mizak, here. Janudis?
Here.
Fluhardi?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Rhodes?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Coche?
Here.
Consul, you have before you the minutes of the work session of April 2nd, 2018. Any corrections? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Janudis? Call roll.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Abstain.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of April 2nd, 2018. Any changes or corrections there? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Mizak, second by Saunders. Call roll.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Abstain.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
And the minutes of the ward meetings, 3 and 5, on April 9th of 2018. Changes or corrections to that one? Seeing none, then motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Janudis. Call roll.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
We have several presentations tonight, which, as everybody knows, is my favorite thing to do. And we're gonna start off first with Mike and Laura Hewlett from Broadway Cyclory. They have donated a bicycle to the police department, so we're gonna talk about that. Where's the chief?
Yeah, make the chief drive it.
Well, I can't thank Mike and Laura enough for doing this. And I think the chief will be able to go into better detail than I, how valuable this bike is to our department and to our city for enforcement. I know when we've had a bike in the past, and was it Ron John, was there?
He was one of them.
One other bike head? He was over town, around town faster than some of the police cars could get there. He could cut through and everything. It's such a great tool that we are indebted to you for doing this. This bicycle is not your typical bike. It costs some sort of thirteen hundred dollars. That's a pretty awesome donation.
Bedford's been very good to us, so it's something we have to give back.
And I'll let the chief say a few words here.
Yeah, I would like to personally thank Mike and Laura for their very generous donation. It just means the world to us. We've had the bike unit for quite a few years, but the last couple of years has been pretty much nonexistent because we had some manpower issues. But now that we have some extra officers coming on, we were able to, if we wanted to get it up and running, we pulled the bikes out of storage that we had, and they're pretty outdated. They needed some serious updating and replacing, which was a little bit out of our budget, so this comes at a perfect time. Like the mayor said, it's a very valuable tool, not only for traffic enforcement, but for criminal patrol. It's excellent, because they don't know we're coming on it. They don't see us until it's too late.
Stop.
What makes this bike special?
It's got disc brakes, it's got a rear rack, it's got a bag, water bottle, suspension cord.
It's also a rechargeable light.
It's got the police designation on it, so it's ready to go. It's awesome.
Again, thank you so much. If you need more bags and whatnot, come see us and we'll see what we can help you out with.
All right, thank you again very much.
It's our pleasure.
This is cool.
And we're expecting pictures on the police website of wheelie contests.
Then our next presentation, maybe somebody might be riding on this. I'd like to call up Brett Miller. Brett is our newest police officer. We're gonna swear him in tonight. We're happy we're keeping up with our promise of adding the three extra police officers courtesy of the tax increase. And money well spent, because not only do we get a new officer, but now we'll have another officer that'll have a chance to be riding his bike. This is a great tool. You ever see him around town, and once they're out, I know the riders like to stop and talk to people. He gets around so fast, it's amazing. But before that, we wanna welcome you to the city of Bedford.
Thank you.
And let's swear you in, then we can talk. And repay you after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Brett Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and laws of the city of Bedford.
And the Charter and laws in the city of Bedford.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the position of patrolman of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
Of the position of patrolman in the city of Bedford, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God. Yeah, this is my mother, Linda Miller. My father, Timothy Miller.
You're brothers?
Yeah, and my brother Brandon Miller is here in the back. I was kinda trapped, but yeah. And then my girlfriend Erica Gregg is also right next to them.
You wanna say anything, Mike?
I just wanna thank the city of Bedford for this opportunity. Thank my family and friends for coming tonight and the support throughout the past couple of years. And the city of Walton Hills for the support over the past couple of years as well. And training me and starting out my career there. And I look forward to starting up here, and I'm really excited about it, so thank you all. I appreciate it.
And a brand new bike.
I'd just like to welcome Brett aboard. Welcome aboard, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to welcome your family and friends here. Thank you for your support. And thank you city council, city administration, and civil service for making this hiring possible. Like the mayor said, this is number two of the three additional officers. So we still got one more to go, so Brett, you're gonna have some seniority here pretty soon. Just wanna give you a couple of words of wisdom. Throughout your career, always remember to be true to yourself, true to your family, and always honor the badge.
Wanna welcome Police Chief Stan Jaworski from Walton Hills, where we stole him from. Thanks for getting him. We do appreciate that. Thanks to all the officers for being here, and it's a great night. A new officer, a new bike.
Thank you very much.
See you around. And I know you guys like to have your little doing after this, so we'll give you a couple of minutes to... Well, you know what, before you go, since we have a captive audience, if I can have, if you come on up? We have one more presentation, only it's, we're getting presented, right?
Ah, yes.
Jean Safer from the Garden Club.
Aye, thank you. And yes, on behalf of the Garden Club, and I know we have several members here, maybe some members on city council. I am delighted to present the city with this check that will go towards the flowers that are on the Union Street Bridge. That you've seen them last year, how gorgeous those are. And it creates a really nice welcome into the city. So, and that's a historic bridge, and we're just really delighted to do our part. We continue to do whatever we can to beautify the city.
The Garden Club does an awesome job with the flowers they do out in front of city hall here, around the commons area. We really appreciate that, and we'll wait till Dominion gets out of the way before we blow it up. But this is awesome, and thank you very much.
Just to remind everyone, our annual plant sale is coming up on Friday, starting May 11th and 12th. And we'll have some gorgeous things there, including some homegrown corunnials.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
And come join us. Thank you very much.
Brett, thank you. We gotta make this official, since we wanna do this.
Jean, where is it gonna be at this year, since Ellenwood is...
It's gonna be my house.
In Heather's backyard and driveway.
So if you come, you get a free tour of my house.
I'll park over at Ellenwood, and then come across the street to Heather's house. And when you buy a lot of flowers, we can help you take them to your car.
Yeah, due to the fact that Ellenwood's gonna be closed, we're just gonna relocate across the street to my driveway. Parking, we'll park at Ellenwood. If you're a handicap, we'll have handicap parking in my yard for that, so you don't have to walk so far. But it should work out fine.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, this is great. And I know the police officers probably wanna go have a little doing at your department over there, so we'll give you a minute to clear out and get out. I wanna bring up a couple of things right now before we get into business. Just send our condolences to this Alada family passing of... Andy Senior, Young Man. He was also on city council, some of you may not know. He served eleven years, and then Maryland was twenty-six years. So there's been this Alada sitting on that seat for a long, long time. And again, we wanna offer our condolences to the family. And also another significant person that was a good friend of the city is Rich Pergert. You may know him as the guy that got all the tents for the square and any doing that was around. Whether it was his audio equipment, he worked for Party Safari. Rich was one of them guys that just stepped up above and beyond when we needed something. He'd tell us, "I don't know if I can get this," and then it'd be there. And we'd say, "Well, we don't know, our budget doesn't allow us to do it, don't worry about it." He'd handle it. Guys, you know, we've dealt with him for a long time, and we are gonna miss him and all his talents that helped the city. And he is a, family's longtime Bedford resident. Again, we wanna give his family our condolences on a great loss to the city. And with that, we have to conduct our business, if I can see. Ordinance number 9571-17-18.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we get a motion to modify that ordinance to substitute J to Valley Ford Truck and adjusting the price to thirty thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars in the year? Oh, in the year? Twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen, yes.
I could have a motion for those changes by Saunders, second by Mizak. Call the roll.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
And can I have a motion for third and final reading by Spinks, second by Janudis? Mike, you wanna explain the difference there?
Sure, yep. Each of these, the next three, all from J. We had passed that, and we were notified that originally we had until the nineteenth to place those orders, which is later this week. We reached out to JBO GMC a couple of weeks ago, following council's approval of this ordinance. And they were told, and they notified us, that the factory, not J, that actual factory, had stopped all new orders on these vehicles throughout this year. There's gonna be a change in the body style and chassis of those trucks, and then we're not available. We did try to reach out to Chevy, Lally, they had indicated the same, it's basically the same vehicle, different brand. So we were unable to get those two vehicles, which is why, obviously, replacing these three is pretty imperative. As I had originally indicated, the one vehicle is a 1996, the frame and body is both rotted. That is something that we're not comfortable putting a plow on throughout the later months of this year, which is why we're recommending to make the purchases through Ford, to at least replace these vehicles this year.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Ordinance number 9572-18.
We also need an amendment to modify this to Valley Ford Truck to purchase a 2019 three-quarter ton Ford pickup at an adjusted price of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars.
Motion for change by Mizak, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
And motion for third and final by Fluhardi, second by Janudis. And again, changes to reasons Mike stated. Actually, two of these vehicles were cheaper than the GMCs, and one was a little higher, so we have a net $2,000 saving by the switching of the cars.
Plus the 2019.
And they're 2019 instead of 18, so... Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Ordinance number 9582-18.
Same motion to amend it to Valley Ford Truck to purchase a 2019 four-by-four three-quarter ton Ford pickup truck at an adjusted amount of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
And motion to accept the amendment by Janudis, second by Spinks. Call the roll.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Motion for third and final by Mizak, second by Saunders. And again, same reasoning, get a 2019, and this is one that's actually 2,000 cheaper, so that's good news. Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Ordinance number 9577-18.
Seventy-four?
Seventy-four, what did I say?
Just an ordinance amending section 91503 entitled Containers, Newspapers, and Trimmings, and ordinance number 727-45, section 91510, entitled Removal Requirements and Declaring an Emergency.
And this is, okay, a motion for third and final by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Suspension, call the roll.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes, second by Janudis.
Mike, sir, down-down garbage pickup ordinance.
Sure. We took a look at a couple of these ordinances, they mostly portend that the containers and the trash removal, but it also puts requirements on providing trash containers to some of the tenants, both residential and businesses. Should there not be space, they have to make arrangements, and they also have to work with the city of Bedford. Now, there's some locations down there that some of the tenants simply don't have a location where they can get rid of their trash, thus leading to the overflowing cans and other issues that we're dealing with in downtown. So we took a look at this, there were some pieces in this legislation that needed to get cleaned up a bit, given the year we're in. Some of these were put in place in the fifties, I think.
Ah, yes, I didn't know even that. Some of them were from the thirties and forties.
So we're trying to modify it a bit and update it, and hopefully this will help and both provide options for some of the tenants downtown and also help keep it clean.
We're happy to say that you can now safely dispose of your night soil into your trash cans. That was one of the things we had to remove. Sorry.
That's a good thing. Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9577-18.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Bedford to accept the titles to parcels of land obtained through the county of county land reutilization corporation in the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
And motion for suspension by Fluhardi, second by Janudis. Call the roll.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Mike?
Yes, these are, there were three properties that we, that were condemned and needed to get demolished last year. As everyone knows, the city has gone after and demolished some properties, and what we do is we are utilizing the money that came back from our NSP grant program, and we're using those funds to demolish homes. In the event that we're able to partner with the land bank, we will have them come in and demolish the homes at their cost. Obviously, they don't wanna hold on to the properties, so what they'll do is they'll title them over to the city, at which point we'll work to sell either to the adjoining property owners or put the lot up for sale. So this is what this is. The land bank came in, they demolished the three residences last year that were condemned at their cost, and now there's property that we'll work to liquidate.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Ordinance number 9586-18.
Amending ordinance number 9473-17 of chapter 1311 of our ordinances by enacting new section 131129J entitled Certificate of Rental License and Inspection and Declaring an Emergency.
And sir, I wish to put this on second reading so we can give it a full three readings. Have a motion for such by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
And reports, Mr. Malice.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items, just a friendly reminder that we have our last of ward meetings this coming Monday, and this will be for wards two and six, although anybody is welcome. Very informative and gives the public the ability to ask any questions to not only us, but the rest of our administration. So if you get a chance, please come out to, come up there. I did wanna thank a group of about twenty to thirty volunteers that were organized through the Watershed, one of them being Councilman Janudis, who came out this past Saturday and planted about fifty trees on Columbus Road. A few years ago, we actually partnered with this organization, and there were two abandoned properties and a garage, and we were able to get those properties razed. And the green space maintained, cleaned up, it looks much, much better, especially at an entrance to the city. So the Watershed came out, and they planted trees, they're gonna be doing more of these as we partner with them in the future, but I did wanna acknowledge those volunteers. It's all volunteer work, and it was, it was a great event. Friendly reminder too, we're gonna be giving our entrance exam for the private department. That is going to be on May 19th. Anybody interested, stop in, sign up, give us a call if you have any questions regarding that. Try to get as much interest and hopefully as many people signed up for that as possible. We do have our chipper service out again, so again, reminder, if you need that service, contact the service garage. You can get your address on the list, it's gonna be the first full week of every month, so make sure you give them a call and they can get you on the list. We did go out last week, our engineer and our service director and staff did our assessment, as we had indicated, for the city streets. Obviously, as we know, and as a result of not having a road program for some years, there's some significant issues. To be quite honest with you, we can spend two million dollars and still not be able to. And that's where we're at. We are gonna be giving a recommendation to Consul for this year, based on, as we had indicated, through the tax issue, we're gonna be investing about $400,000. But we are also gonna be looking at some grants. There's a county grant that we're anticipating that'll come out for about 150, and we're gonna be looking at possibly adding that to our road program to try to complete as many roads as possible. Our target is gonna be the worst of the worst. Putting it in perspective, there's streets from 1991 was the last time they were done. That's over. So we're gonna be putting a recommendation to Consul, and obviously getting ready to go out to bid and all of that, so I just wanted to let the public know we are moving forward that program. Our K-9, our second K-9 officer and dog, Luca, completed their training, and they were starting today. So again, that is going to be, we will have a K-9 unit on duty seven days a week, and I'd like to compliment the Bedford Autumn Isle for contributing to the acquisition of that. um, that dog once again, so, great corporate partner they are. Uh, we did run into, as the mayor indicated, Dominion, East Ohio, um, was making, uh, plans last week to cross Broadway to make the final connection. All the other connections are complete except that crossing. Uh, when they open cut Broadway, there again seems to be a significant amount of water flow. Um, what was more concerning is a cavity that we identified. Um, when they did this, it was late Thursday evening, we were down there about eleven o'clock. Cavity is about five feet wide by thirty feet long on the curb lane of Broadway. Um, we chose at that point, uh, chose to shut that project down, which is why you see the curb lane is closed. It is closed because there's a cavity there, um, due to some of that water. Uh, Cleveland water had come out, um, and they did shut down their thirty-inch main. Um, so, uh, what happens when you do that, it takes a few days to completely drain out. Um, so, they've done that throughout the weekend and they're gonna be onsite tomorrow morning to be pulling the plates off the road. Hopefully, that water subsided. Um, if it didn't, then there's, there's leaks and they're coming from somewhere and we're gonna need to work with them to try to find them. Uh, until that water can stop, you know, they can't lay that pipe. So, that's why, um, you see the, the condition of it is right now and you s- now you know why that, that curb lane is blocked. Eventually, we will have to get that repaired, um, and work with them to try to address that. Um, but first things first, we wanna find out where that water leak is coming from. We believe it's on the thirty-inch main, um, we'll find out tomorrow morning. So, that's, uh, a little update on Dominion. Once they can make that crossing on Broadway, we can button up the rest of, of all the holes. Um, but obviously, there's some other issues there as well. It was acknowledged a little bit, as far as demos, uh, are concerned. Uh, we did submit a significant grant due to county for about five hundred and, I think the number was like five hundred and eight thousand dollars is what we applied for. Um, it includes two commercial properties, one of them being the, the Moon Glow site, as well as a handful of residential properties. Some that the city has worked to acquire through that they've been abandoned and through tax foreclosure process. Um, others that were in the process of either condemning them or working with the land bank to, uh, acquire. These are vacant structures, we don't take any properties that are occupied, um, but they're properties that are, are in bad shape. And it's our intention to utilize these funds through this grant to, to demolish the properties and clean, clean the areas up. So, um, that grant was submitted, I wanna give, uh, uh, credit to Jennifer, who worked very hard, and Calvin assisted as well. Um, a lot of information goes into that, so we'll keep our fingers crossed, we should know, uh, later this year. Um, and lastly, I just want a friendly reminder, um, you know, obviously, last, yesterday, it rained for twenty, thirty hours in a row. Um, if anybody would ever come across any issues as far as water, um, please call dispatch. Um, we are in constant communication with the dispatch center, um, and if we see a large amount of calls, for instance, if there's ten or fifteen calls coming in in one street, obviously, we know there's an issue and we'll send a crew out immediately. Um, but, you know, we, we did, regardless of that, we had total, um, yesterday, there were three calls that were sent in to dispatch. Uh, we had two, I believe, on our answer machine this morning, uh, our crews did go out. Um, but we did have a crew out anyways last night, uh, there was some standing water in some of the streets. Um, some of the catch basins were blocked, so we did send them in, uh, to try to get those cleaned up. So, again, some people like to, to wait or around, maybe I'll just, you know, call in the morning. If, if you're seeing or experiencing those things, call dispatch, they track it. We have a system in place internally where we follow up and we can identify that, and it helps us really see what the issues are on a broader, on a broader spectrum, so, um, any of that would help. End of report, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Montello?
Thank you, Mayor, just, uh, thank, uh, I wanna congratulate Officer Miller and also congratulate, or thank you, some of the Garden Club for their donations, uh, condolences to Zalada and, um, Purgit family, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Gambosi, I imagine you've got something to say about taxes, huh?
I do. Last day's tomorrow, folks, so if you haven't paid and, uh, haven't filed, nothing, tomorrow's the last day. So, we'll be open just up until five, so that's all you got. But we've had a pretty good response so far, I would say, and, uh, it's going pretty well. Uh, congratulations to Officer Miller and Laura Hewitt. Mike appreciate the donation, that's great. Police officers will do well with that, as they did last time with that bicycle program that they had. Uh, just announcing too, on the fun run, uh, Pancake Breakfast coming up with Rotary April twenty-ninth, if you ever got it on your calendar, uh, we'll be, uh, have a great day there, art show also at the high school, uh, April twenty-ninth, from, that will be served pancakes from nine to one. So, if you're interested in coming up there, uh, we could sell tickets at the door, we have a lot of prizes, uh, that you could buy raffle tickets for and, uh, good fundraiser that we'll be utilizing locally, uh, through the Rotary donations. End of my report.
Thank you. And council reports, Mrs. Mizek.
Actually, I was gonna say, I had no report because everybody before me took something from me, but that's okay. First off, I would also like to pop my condolences to Zalada family and to the Purgit, Purgit family, um, for their, their losses. The best thing Rich Purgit did for us is when we had our fireworks and he set the fireworks to music. If you didn't see our fireworks shows when we did have them, it was a very special event and evening because everybody just was amazed by the music making the fireworks look better than just watching the fireworks. As far as Mr. Zalada goes, that man was highly respected. He was a councilman before I was, but I met him back in the seventies and I knew that he was there for his, the people of his ward. And of course, being passed down to Maryland was the best thing that ever happened. Usually, you know, the wife takes over a lot of things and she did the best she could to, for twenty-six years to keep this city and most of us on our toes. So, we're good with that. Um, as far as, um, saying thank you to Laura and her husband, their bicycle was beautiful and I'm sure the police department will, does appreciate it and it will be put to good use. Wish we could've had them tonight, but better late than never, so we have it now and we're gonna use, thank you. I was going to talk about our involvement when we should call nine-one, not nine-one-one, but the non-emergency phone line. Last night, we did receive calls about flood zone in our area of Ward Four and V. And it was taken care of immediately in the evening, they went down and closed that part of the road that was from Appleton down, um, Button Road on the Park side. I wanna say thank you to Mike, who passed along the penny for the diversion. Kids that did come out to try to clean up some of the litter that's been thrown all over. It does look better when it's not around, but we can't correct everybody when things happen. But, like I say, if we can't get involved in our own city, then, um, you know what? We appreciate any and all comments and we do our best to cover everything for you, but we also gotta be on our toes to let everybody know, we're not gonna stand for it. We need to make ourselves presentable no matter where we're at, if we're a homeowner, a renter, or just a visitor. I want that, this is Bedford and this is a nice town. I've heard that for many, many years and I hope we continue that, um, thought for people coming to our city. There's three events coming up in the few, in the future, in the next couple of weeks. And the first one, of course, Frank mentioned it, the Rotary Pancake Breakfast with the Five K Mile Run. I don't, I'm not a renter, but I try to get in there and watch them. Uh, we, I'm out of, this is gonna be, the dates are gonna be out of, uh, sequence because the last one's the one I might talk about. Uh, the next one would be the Shred Day, Saturday, nine to noon on May nineteenth. But April twenty-first is, uh, May nineteenth, yeah, for Shred Day. And then we have one to, uh, thank you, thank you, I thought you were doubting.
No, I'm gonna, we're down. Give it the test at the same time.
And the last one is this Saturday, it's kind of a stupid day, but I put a lot of stupid things in my life and maybe this'll be one of them, too. Saturday is gonna be National Squirrel Day. We do have a lot of food in our neighborhood. And we also have some more in the wildlife. And I wonder, sure has been busy for most of the wildlife because the new babies are coming with the deer because, you know, that's one of my favorite pet peeves, the deer. But now, everybody thinks these animals are so cute. Not, right, to feed them or touch them, these guys take care of reindeer. The squirrel, if you can watch him make a mess up your front yard, you know he's doing well. But other than that, don't touch him. Now, I was told the other day by one of the neighbors to go, oh, there's such cute little kittens walking around here. They are so cute, they're black and white, I said, don't come up. Because they have an odor, because they're not kittens, they're skunks. Oh, they have, I hollered, you're new living, I, what's back there, you do now. So, anyhow, like I said, our little furry friends, we've gotta be careful because we don't want disease. Many of us know about that. And we don't wanna give it to somebody else that ate another animal. Might give it to somebody else, but don't give it. Have a good week, I hope we see each other soon again because I wanna come back to you. So, I'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janutus.
Thank you. Well, so, I didn't realize that Saturday was National Squirrel Day.
Oh, I just found out.
So, we're not to handle the squirrels on Saturday, and it's like that's their day off or?
Let's do an Earl's squirrel. Can we do an Earl's squirrel? Pitched a squirrel. He actually qualified, squirrel's name is Chester. And he comes out and says, just chatters his little head off, and every other day, when I notice a bad cat, I know there's trouble. Thank you.
Well, that's good to know, it's, you know, actually, there's always a lot to, uh, learn when you think you know it all. You know, um, I'm just becoming aware of the, uh, Soil and Water Conservation, uh, District and the Tinkers Creek Watershed and these people do great work and, um, you know, they're out there protecting our water ways and we're so proud of our Tinkers Creek and the falls and everything and these people are trying to make sure that it's, you know, not polluted and, you know, it's, the water's good. We have a lot of, uh, concerns about our stormwater runoff and, uh, we have some aging systems, um, and, um, you know, it, it's not gonna get any better uh, because there's more and more impermeable surfaces. So consequently, stormwater is, is a bigger and bigger issue. And these people, uh, kind of have a handle on it and, uh, to the extent that they do have some, uh, information that we can learn from them and I think that we'll have some, uh, informational, uh, things set up for the, for the, uh, in the summer so that should be interesting, uh, very supportive of that. Our, um, the Pancake Breakfast, don't forget, it's a big art show too, so you have all the little kids in town, they're bringing their best artwork to the, uh, city, so if you go to the Pancake Breakfast, make sure you check out the basketball arena and see all the artwork because, uh, I know the kids are really proud of it, so it's wonderful to see. And, uh, lastly, uh, the Ward Two and Six, uh, award meetings, uh, Monday, so everyone should come, even if you're not in the ward, as, as Mike pointed out, uh, there's a lot of good information. The mayor and the, uh, city manager have a lot of good information to share because a lot of good things are happening, so it's pretty exciting. And, uh, I just have to say finally that, uh, we, we really have some really great people that live in, in Bedford and we just, you know, more and more, it's coming to my attention and I'm humbled by it and, uh, really appreciate knowing so many of you, so many of you now. And I think we should just be, uh, celebrate and rejoice in each other because, you know, there's a bunch of great people that live in this town and I think that's, uh, part of the reason that, uh, we like it and we stay here and live here and we like Bedford so much, so thanks to all the contributions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fluharty.
Yeah, last night, of course, with the weather, I ended up texting Mike because I had a call from someone on Henry Street that the street was getting pretty well blocked up and, uh, I wanna thank, within an hour, they were out taking care of the situation. And on Sunday night, that's a pretty quick response and I appreciate that very much. Uh, also, the area that I've been checking out for the last four or five weeks, Mike and myself, uh, behind the apartments over there on Snowco, behind Snowco, on Union and Norfield, they're dumping garbage over there, but we finally got somebody, we hired somebody to take care of the situation and, uh, whenever the weather's probably good enough, they're gonna get down there in that ravine and clean this all out. But, uh, it's something you can't see walking around or driving around, but it's a mess and, uh, uh, I thank the people that live around there to report this fire, I don't know how long this has been going on, but it's probably been over a few years, but we're finally getting this taken care of and, uh, we'll clean up the area and hopefully, uh, we won't have a problem with it again.
End of report. Thank you.
Uh, say hello to everybody here tonight, uh, I'm gonna ask the mayor first. Uh, do we do certificates of respect for people? Because both of these, um, men who passed away, Andy Zalada, Rich Purgit, did a lot for the city. It would be nice if we put together one of those and made them present it at the council meeting or to the families, because I think, given what they have both done, uh, they definitely deserve it. So, if it wasn't on the radar yet, um, let's put it on there.
Absolutely.
And let's, uh, work down to this. Firstly, Ward Six and Two's award meeting next week, since the thirty of you out there in the audience are from Ward Six. I hope this, yeah, most of you will probably be here anyway, but, uh, tell your neighbors, this is their chance to get out and question some of the things, uh, that the city may be doing, aren't doing, or you would like to see us doing. Uh, get out there and voice your opinion. You'll hear some of the, as was mentioned, uh, the city will get the presentation as to what the, uh, could be in the future. Uh, hopefully, we can forget the past because the last few years have been really bad. Uh, hopefully, we've turned a corner and we're gonna work ourselves back out in a hole that a lot of communities have had. Uh, we have some positive outlooks here for the future, so come to the meeting and hear all about it. Flooding, uh, I know they probably didn't call it in, but the area that basically drains from Columbus down through Logan, down through Garden and Elm, and eventually out through what would be this site actually, uh, that whole area was inundated with water, uh, yesterday. Granted, it was one heck of an unusual storm, none of the catch basins could take the water, so, uh, that area seems to flood out. It's no more as the hospital string all the way through because it does go through their impervious parking lots through there. But I think Elm, especially right up at Blaine, took a good hit of water coming, flowing through there. Uh, if we can at least check the basins through that area, uh, make sure that they're cleaned out. But as a general statement, a lot of the catch basins throughout Ward Six, especially because of that heavy water, clean the streets, but all the debris is sitting on the grates themselves and any future rain may actually not be able to penetrate into the catch basins because the grates are all plowed. I don't know if we wanna go around with a vacuum truck and suck off the grates or?
We did, we did have that end jet out over on Blaine today, so we're getting around through there.
Remember, this is a general statement, a lot of the catch basins, all through the presidential area and stuff like that. And I'm sure if it's in my area, it is in a lot of the other areas. The catch basin grates are all plugged because of the crud that the winter produced and now have washed onto them. So, if we could get that looked at when we have time, I know we're short staffed, but, uh, that would certainly help. Uh, stump grinding, I noticed they were doing some up in Ward Three. Are we gonna get some of these stumps done? Because there's quite a few from Ward Y, streets that the city removed especially, uh, that Because there's quite a few from where the ash trees that the city removed especially that are, we have a lot of stumps. I know, once again, we are short staffed and they can only do it when they can get to it. But it would be nice if we cleaned up some of these tree lawns a little bit.
We are, we did send that crew out. Actually, we're utilizing our manpower as creatively as we can. With Ellenwood being down, it did free up a couple of individuals. And what we had them do is we've put them over in the service department. And they were actually the crew that was out there trying to get, you know, a head start. We have quite a few of stumps to get, you know, done.
Yes.
But that is, that is on our list and will continue to allow us to go through and address those.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes?
Hello, everyone, how are you guys this evening? Happy to be here. I wanna thank everyone who came to the Ward Three and Ward Five meeting. We had a really good turnout, I was very happy with it. If you wanted to go and you missed it, we videotaped it. You can find a copy of that video at BedfordWardFiveTheNumberFive.com. As you may or may not know, Ellenwood will be closed longer than expected. This was due to some additional asbestos found in the building. But since we don't wanna end on like a negative note with Ellenwood, I would like to say that we will be getting security cameras around the building. It was inside and out to keep an eye on the pavilion, the playground, the interior, things like that. It will also be fitted with Wi-Fi, which is a big leap forward. So I'm very happy about that. Of course, if you would like to register for any of the programs that we have at Stanford Square, you can go up to City Hall right now to register. I believe we have baseball, basketball, and the summer program available right now. I'm a big fan of summer program, I have my son in that program. It's a great program if anybody has small children. Next, we had the first stakeholders meeting for the Main Street program. Main Street is a designation that you reach. So in the meantime, we will be calling the organization the Bedford Downtown Alliance. We are hoping for T-shirts any day now. They really, really are supposed to be here any day now. Once we have those, we'll be selling them for twenty dollars apiece. They have the Bedford Downtown Alliance logo on there. It's a stylized version of our, of our depot with a star above it that's been hollowed out to look like our five points intersection in downtown Bedford. Currently, the Bedford Historical Society is redoing their website. If you have any pictures of events and classes that have been done at the Historical Society, we would really appreciate those items. It can be either digital or I can scan in hard copies. Just let me know if you have anything like that. I'm also happy to let everybody know that we are close to relaunching the Welcome Packet Program that fell to the wayside about ten years ago. That program will be where we have a little welcoming committee that goes out and hands this over, informational packet to new residents that may be coming into the area. We're hoping to have that going in about a month. We'll also be bringing back the Good Neighbor Packet, which is a little pamphlet that will tell you how to be a good neighbor. You know, things like noise ordinances, keeping dogs on leashes, when to put your trash out, stuff like that. We will be doing a blanket, hopefully. We're still working on that part of the city since it's been gone for so long. And then that How to Be a Good Neighbor will also go out with the Welcome Packet. If you're interested in being part of the welcoming committee, please let me know and I'll put you in touch with the ladies who are heading up that committee. Last but not least, the Garden Club will be having their Arbor Day celebration coming up on April twenty-seventh. That typically happens at ten o'clock. I'm not sure the location is this year. Is it City Hall? Okay. So we're gonna be doing a planting here at City Hall if you'd like to come and celebrate with us. Typically, we have a little group of kids and the tree will be dedicated to somebody typically. So anyway, I invite you all to go. And that ends my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks?
I'd like to congratulate New Officer Miller on board to our city. Also, a huge thank you to Mike and Laura Hewlett for doing that. We really appreciate that. We appreciate everything that y'all do as a business and as homeowners here. You're also residents here. So thank y'all for constantly, you're always involved in things in our city and we appreciate it. Also, wanna give a big thank you to the Garden Club for how much y'all do for our city. Had the unveiling of the art fence around the garden behind the Historical Society a couple of weekends ago. And if you didn't get a chance to get there to see that, please make sure you go downtown behind the Historical Society and go look at that fence because it's just an amazing piece of artwork that's down there. The students did a great job and thank you Joyce and Jean and all the Garden Club that did such a good job on doing that. And thank y'all for all the beautification that you do to our city, the downtown area. And it's so nice to go on Union Street in the summer and see those big baskets of flowers. It kinda makes us like when you go to Chagrin Falls, you see that. So it makes you really proud of our city to see that, the flowers out here and everywhere. It'll just beautify the city a lot. With the weather being a little bit longer this year, of course, we're supposed to get snowed on, is Bedford Beauty's gonna be a little bit later this year? Please tell me it will be. I know my yard's not gonna be raining.
We'll, we'll get that information out.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, thank you again for that, that's pretty. One awesome brag, the Bedford Magical Singers, who April the seventh performed in New York City and called World Stride. And it was a competition at the Historical Riverside Church in New York City, which is, I've never been able to see it, but they, that's a landmark in New York City. That's, the Riverside Church is something if you go to New York City, you must go see. But they brought home silver. So very proud of our magical singers. They were in a huge competition. So that's a pretty big deal there to be part of that. Miss Sarah Johncock, which is their leader, she's awesome and does so much with these kids. And then last Wednesday, the magical singers were singing the National Anthem at the Cavs game. And it was, and get a chance, you can go on the website and see it. And they just did a phenomenal job. So that makes you really, really proud of our kids doing that. So that was, that was awesome. I was laid up in the hospital and flipped on the TV and there was our magical singers singing the National Anthem on the TV. So that was pretty neat. They brought out the flag and it was a spectacular presentation. And I'm so very proud of our kids at our school for doing that. Our football team always gets a lot of shouts out for doing so good. But our, also our art department and our music department are really awesome. They kind of, they win a lot of competitions and we don't always hear about them winning the competitions. We hear about our Bearcats football team and we don't hear about our behind the scenes groups. Also, Mike, thank you very much for the increased police presence on Grand Boulevard. I did see a lot of flashing lights the last couple of weeks. I've seen people being pulled over and I've seen them all up and down. So thank you very much. And I've noticed it's helped quite a bit. Haven't seen as many spears come flying down Grand Boulevard. So thank you for doing that. Had kind of a weird thing happen this weekend. Of course, when people do stop at that stop sign at Grand, they like to throw out their trash in the tree lawn. So I'm always constantly picking up trash. And Jim Sliffield, thank you, and your son Robert for, in the summertime, picking up cans and trash and walking around in the sun, they go and they clean our streets a lot. So we appreciate that, thank you for doing that as a resident. But as I was cleaning up the trash in my yard, there was a kitchen knife stuck in my yard. A rather large kitchen knife, just stuck right in the yard. And I was like, it's such a weird thing, you know, you're walking down, we have a lot of walkers, but I've never thought about, by seeing something like that, I would never dream to pick it up and stick it in someone's yard. So if any other residents in my ward have had some weird thing like that happen, please let me know. It's kind of alarming because we have a lot of children that run around in that area. Little kids that run around unattended. They had parents that, what, these little five and six-year-olds run around the neighborhood unattended. So it's kinda scary if a little kid was to get a hold of an item like that and hurt themselves. So if you see anything like that, you know, something laying on the ground that looks unsafe, please report it. I did have the police come out and look at it. So, and a report?
Thank you. And I'd like to also thank Laura for assisting with Heather on the Main Street program. They're quite involved with town and again, we appreciate, that's the kind of citizenship that takes a town from good to great. To have people that are involved and we appreciate all you guys do. And it's a great program that we're all looking forward to. Also, big news if you haven't heard, Chanel High School was sold to the Bedford City Schools. It's a good thing, we're quite happy about that. It's gonna be a long-term process, what they do there. They're not hundred percent sure what direction. They're gonna think about it and do what's right up there. But we're quite pleased that they got the property. And obviously, we're here to help them in their endeavors, whatever they decide to do up there. And this past week, I had a great opportunity. A young lady from Destination Cleveland, which is the travel arm of the Greater Cleveland Partnership, called me up and we met out at the cafe, the Bedford Falls Cafe for coffee. And she brought along a couple of British gentlemen that are looking to possibly add Bedford as part of their tour when they come to the Cleveland area. Just happens, both gentlemen were from Bedford, England. That was a good thing. And they're quite enthused, I think we have a picture of Bedford, England up there. They were, they were quite excited to see the town. And Elmer Schultz from the Historical Society came over and we gave a tour of the building and the falls. And they were quite impressed with our town. And so when they do go to Cleveland, they're gonna have, one day, they're gonna come out here to Cleveland, or to Bedford. And as luck would have it, next year, I'll be going to Bedford, England. Not, not because of them, I had planned to be for it. Now I know I have somebody to talk to when I go there. Maybe translate British. English, don't know how to speak English. But anyhow, it's a great thing that we're gonna be put on the map internationally, have these groups come into town. So it's a good thing, hopefully we'll have some more. And, oh, one more thing. There's cards up here, if you were in the military, your family was a part of the military, or spouses, dads, uncles, whatever. There's a Military Resource Fair this coming Friday between nine AM and noon at DeBrockview Heights Community Center. They're gonna have all stuff pertaining to vets and programs they can get and help they can get. All kind of military-related information. So there's plenty of cards up here, take a handful if you know anybody that was in the military. Give them the card. It's sponsored by Representative Wienelski. And this year, she let us join in, even though we're not part of her district. So I think that was nice she did that. But again, if you're military, you know somebody military, come and get a card. We got a, got a whole stack of them here. Please hand them out, it's, it's a good thing for the vets. And let's get on with business.
Ordinance number ninety-five eighty-eight dash eighteen.
Authorizing change order number one with Eric's Environmental Management Service Incorporated for asbestos abatement at Ellenwood Recreation Center, declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Mizek, second by Saunders. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. As indicated in my memo, when we were, when the company was in there and they tore the ceilings down, obviously it exposed piping. Piping was wrapped in a material that we believe was asbestos. We actually had a company come in, they did an air quality test. But we did, in addition to the air quality test, had that tested, it was asbestos. We needed to get that removed. As well as there were two small rooms that had an old textured ceiling that was identified as asbestos following the initial ceiling that was taken down. So that is what this increase is for, to finish the project.
Thank you, they're doing a tremendous job down there. Call the roll, please.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five eighty-nine dash eighteen.
An ordinance authorizing city manager to contract, enter a contract with the AFL-CIO, otherwise known as ASME, for the next three years.
Which is our service department workers, some, and others, most of them. Have motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Janudis, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the last of our three union contracts there. And it is pretty much the exact same terms and conditions as both the police and fire that was previously approved. We've obviously made some substantial changes to our prescription program. We've also implemented smoking piece in there, identifying those that smoke and that they would pay additional in their monthly premiums. We kept some longevity payments and also the wage package. I believe, as I said in the last two contracts that council approved, I think this was a fair deal. And it was a good deal for both sides. Negotiations were done in a respectful manner, as it was with both police and fire as well. And we recommend this contract.
Thank you. And a job well done by the administrative team and the unions, all three of them, that had to have our labor attorney very low, which is ice ass and congenial beatings, get things done on a timely basis. We appreciate your hard work and the work of the guys from the unions. Call the roll, please.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five ninety-eight eighteen. An ordinance enacting new chapter one oh four entitled Contracts of our ordinances to enact new sections one oh four oh one, Contract Procedures, one oh four point zero two, Professional Design Services in Public Works, and one oh four point zero three, Surplus Property, declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Mizek, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Janudis. Mike?
Just, uh, this, sir. Basically, we're adding a chapter to our ordinances to simplify the contract procedures to expedite them and to, a little more discretion in awarding contracts. The Ohio Vice Code permits, the Ohio State House has some pretty stringent restrictions in how we can contract with entities. So by, we're trying to ease those restrictions so we can act in a more efficient and economical manner. And that's what the section's about.
Some of this hasn't been upgraded in years, so about time we put this together and it's, it's a good thing. Call the roll, please.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five ninety-one dash eighteen.
Declaring the property and structure located at eighty-three Henry, permanent parcel number eight one four fourteen zero six thirty a nuisance, and therefore condemning the property, ordering action, and declaring an emergency.
Motion for third and final by Mizak, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the last of our three union contracts there. And it is pretty much the exact same terms and conditions as both the police and fire. That was previously approved. We've obviously made some substantial changes to our prescription program. We've also implemented smoking piece in there, identifying those that smoke and that they would pay additional in their monthly premiums. We kept some longevity payments and also the wage package. I believe, as I said in the last two contracts that council approved, I think this was a fair deal and it was a good deal for both sides. Negotiations were done in a respectful manner, as it was with both police and fire as well. And we recommend this contract.
Thank you. And a job well done by the administrative team and the unions, all three of them, that we had to have our labor attorney very little, which is, I used to have some congenial meetings, get things done on a timely basis. We appreciate your hard work and the work of the guys from the unions. Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coachy?
Yes. And motion for third and final by Janudas, second by Fluharty. Again, Mike explained, these houses are really bad shape. One, our roof is missing, so you can imagine years and years of rain coming into a house. Not good. Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coachy?
Yes. Ordnance number 9593-18.
An ordinance approving a community reinvestment area agreement between the City of Bedford and Quay Inc., authorizing execution of that agreement and authorizing the city manager to enter into an abatement compensation agreement with the Bedford City School District and declaring an emergency.
Sorry, we should have put this on first reading. Motion by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Say anything on this, Mike?
The Quay Inc., this is actually the Mazda Bedford Auto Dealership that's going to be planning on construction this year in Meadowbrook. They had purchased the 12-plus acres and it's going to be, actually building this dealership right at the corner. It's a project that's going to be north of $3 million and the agreement would be 8% over 15 years. 15 years.
It's just part of redeveloping that whole area up there, which is a good thing. Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coachy?
Yes. Motion for third and final by Mizak, second by Saunders. Mike?
We have been working, probably about three years ago, started contracting with small, small cities and villages that need to utilize our jail facility. Obviously, we were, did not have the space until Bedford Heights is going to be relocating and utilizing their jail facility. It does free up some space in our jail, so we're looking to work with the Village of Walton Hills. We don't expect a large amount of individuals coming over here. If we're full, we're filled, full, they would need to find another location. They wouldn't provide the transportation and it would be for the same rate per day as the other entities we've contracted with.
Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coachy?
Yes. Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Mike?
This is actually in reference to the 18, 19 acres that the city owns in the Village of Walton Hills. For those of you that may remember, we had entered and obtained the release of that agreement. In doing so, we identified an entity that wanted to purchase that property and we have tentatively, with the passage of this, will enter into agreement to sell that property. It is, as I mentioned, it's about 18 acres. There's seven clean acres and the rest is currently being monitored by the EPA, as it was our former landfill. The agreement will allow the city, right now, we only utilize the property to dump clean fill when we have big jobs in the city and we have to excavate, need to dump that somewhere. And it would be very expensive to dump that fill if we had to contract with somebody. This agreement, although we are selling the property, we will have exclusive dumping rights to the rear two acres at no cost to the city for the next 10 years. And I can tell you the sale price is more than double the appraised value. This is a good deal for the city.
Jim? Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coachy?
Yes. And we need a motion to reappoint John Powers to the Planning Commission. A very valuable asset there. Motion by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Simple yes and no. Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coachy?
Yes. And we need a motion to reappoint John Powers to the Planning Commission. A very valuable asset there. Motion by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Simple yes and no. Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coachy?
Yes. And now it's time for the hearing of citizens. As you know, please step forward, state your name, address, and your comments.
Reverend Powell, I'm Anthony Lutz. And for safety and security reasons, because I am a reverend, I choose not to give my location of my residence. You have it, I'll write it down right here. And also being in politics myself right now. I agree with you, Mayor Coach, you council members, and everyone present this evening. And I learned something new this evening, that squirrels have rights to a day.
Thank you.
Even squirrels get that, huh? I came this evening for a couple of different reasons. And one of them is the people that I gave the information for, the landlord, they didn't like the fact that I gave that information. And now they're cancelling their contract with housing subsidies. So people who have Section 8, CMHA, or any type of housing subsidy will not be able to rent from Adams and Baylock in the city of Bedford. So you may want to know that. And at your resolutions 9571, 72, and 9582, your vehicles, since you all had those transitions that you had to make, you may want to look into the insurance on how it's going to be impacted. And how it will affect your citizens, Mayor Coach.
Mr. Gamboli, he checked that?
I just, it just came, God just gave me that to this.
Yeah. We give them information on all the vehicles all the time, keep the list up.
I, I know you do what you do. I just, I won't.
That's okay.
I won't do it, I won't pray. I know you do what you do, but it just came to, something may be in there. And the 9591 and 9218, please always remember that we in the faith community, the church is always available with some guidance on what can happen with that land when those properties are condemned, because we do care. I, congratulations also to the new officer and on your new bike. And I also want to give my deepest condolences to the Zilahada family. Today is the memory of my grandmother's birthday. She would have, this would have been her birthday. And I, in good thoughts, I celebrated my dad's 85th birthday last week. And he and my mom have been married for 61 years. I've never had one, seen my parents disrespect each other, nothing dysfunctional. I am so blessed and I come from the best. I wanted to give condolences also to those people who just got bombed. I don't know what's going on around here, Mayor Coach and council members. And I hear you, I've heard you talk a lot this evening about water. That bombing of that chemical bomb is going to affect our relations, our water, our earth, our plants. Something needs to be looked into in terms of that. I recently had a meeting with Eric Gordon in CMSD about putting prayer back in the school and I am so glad that Bedford schools to go to Chanel. And if anyone would like to get with me to make that happen in Bedford, I would love to have that happen in the name of Jesus Christ, of course. And I also wanted Bedford to please look into, I recently did a rally in support of Senate Bill 260, banning assault weapons. And finally, please review the 13th Amendment. It's also known as the Pro-Slavery Amendment, the Ghost Amendment, and the Corwin Amendment. And we can curtail some of this violence in the land if we do that. Some have declared war in a time of peace. And I come to you this evening to tell you that it really is a time of peace. Whatever I can do to help you with that, I'm willing to do so. Thank you very much and God bless you.
Anyone else?
Reverend Daniel 186 Center Roadan, I wish I had the whole back by my curb because they came on a day I wasn't home and now the whole north end of my tree lawn is clay. And I'm not digging it up, I'll spray it green before I dig it up. I'm really upset about that.
Oh, and they filled it?
My whole tree lawn, the big and little trucks back in and out destroyed the south end. The gas company destroyed the south end. Now the north end, which always looked good, looks like crap. Okay. And you said, okay.
We could have, look at that, when the leather breaks?
Now. You said Bedford England is coming?
Yeah, they're going to be put on their tour.
I think it would be really nice. I was part of the group that went to Bedford England. Steve Salvi and I are probably the only two alive yet that went. But they gave us a nice reception, they gave us a key to the city, and we had a really good time there. And it would be nice if we could do the same for them. And also, I think the old post office building data basics ought to be complimented on their beautiful spring garden. Every year it gets better. All those bulbs were a lot of work to put in. It's gorgeous. And they have crocus coming up all over the grass. And it's so nice compared to a certain store in Bedford that had dead plants surrounding it in their windows. I'm finished.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, have motion for adjournment by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coachy?
Yes. Thank you for coming tonight.
That was awesome.
Just going to spray a little.